We only set policy into what we're allowed to by the state legislature.
Yep.
We are a constitutionally created body. So whereas a city is actually a government corporation that's created, you know, by the people to govern their area and they can create any law as long as it's not in opposition to a state law.
Yeah.
So they can create an ordinance or kind of a city law, um, as long as it doesn't conflict. Uh, the county, we can't do anything unless the state says you're allowed to do this. If it says you may do this, that gives us a policy decision that we can make. If it's you must do this, then the county, that's what we do.
And you have to do it. One, two, three, go.
There for hardy har har.
Believe it or not.
Welcome to the lawyer Dana show.
The lawyer Dana podcast.
Wow. We have a lot stuck though.
Then we're going to do it right after this.
Welcome to the lawyer Dana podcast.
All right. So today I am here with Commissioner Daryl Hale from the Collin County Commissioners Court. I guess that's one of your, your.
Correct.
And, and what, so I'm just going to hit you with this. What the hell is a county commissioner? What do you do?
So county, county commissioners, we're, uh, there are 254 county commissioner court bodies in the state of Texas.
Like human beings, or you mean like organizations?
Organizations. So there's 254 county governments.
So each one has a county.
And each, each one has four county commissioners and a county judge. And, and the county government is responsible for setting the budget for all the elected officials. For, you know, the sheriff, the county clerk, county district clerk, uh, all the constables. Uh, so we're responsible for the budgetary oversight to all the dollars and cents that go through the county. The, uh, commissioners court, everything over $2,500, we actually approve on a weekly basis. We have to approve it. And then, and then we also get involved in approving requests for quotes and bids and contracts. Once it goes over certain aggregate dollar amounts. So once you hit $50,000 of a something, as long as it's, you know, say it's road materials. We would have to put it out to bid and then go, and then go through the bid process. Uh, it can actually be really long to get anything done because if it's a major project, you have to put it out for quote. Then you have to accept the, accept the bids and then you have to turn around and then approve the contract with the person that you accepted the bids with. And then we would then turn around and approve payments on the invoices that get submitted to us.
You volunteered for this job?
Yeah. Yeah. We, I actually did.
You actually had to, you actually had to run an election for this, right?
Yes.
And I also want to say this. So Daryl and I have known each other for a long time now. We, did we meet at Top Golf at? I think we met there at Charlie Malolo and his, uh, they were having some kind of thing.
Yeah. I think we actually met at Top Golf. Gosh, probably.
I mean, you were probably playing. I probably wasn't.
10 or 15 years ago. Oh, we were both attempting to play.
Was it that long ago? It was, it was at least 10 years ago.
It was at least 10.
10, 15.
Yeah. I think it was 2012.
I think it was about 2012. So yeah, 10, 11 years now. What happened to that decade? Cause that just went by like this. I still feel like I'm 20. I know I'm not. Doesn't feel any different. And I, you know, it's, but I do also feel like I've known you kind of forever. And, uh, you've, you've always been a, I've liked you every time I've ever interacted with you. I've always thought you were a great guy.
That's good.
And when you started out, you had a painting company.
Yes.
And so your history, you sold that and then ran for county commissioner. And I gotta say this, you have, if not the, at least one of the greatest taglines of any politician in history. Cause his last name is Hale. So his slogan is hail. Yes. And every time you walk into a room, somebody's shouting out hail. Yes.
Yeah, exactly. Um, one of the funny stories that kind of goes along with that is my first time I ran, I got this call from someone that said, I, you, you have to change your signs. Your signs are horrible. I'm a teacher here at, or I'm a, I'm a principal here at Boyd High School. And all the kids are running up and down the halls going hell. Yes. Hell. Yes. Hell. Yes. And we teach them to, to, to speak better than that. I'm like, what? My, my name?
What's wrong with your name?
Exactly. That's exactly what I said. I said, what's wrong with my name? Oh, you know what you mean? I'm like, no, not exactly.
I mean hail. It's called a pun.
I know. I said, it's, it's a very positive thing. And they're saying my name and they're saying yes, because I wanted them to vote for me. And, uh, she goes, well, I just think you have to change it. I said, well, perhaps if you donated, you know, maybe five or $6,000 to me, uh, I'd be able to switch out all my signs. And I, I knew she wasn't going to, I looked her up and she was like a six D Democrat. So she had voted Democrat for as far as I had information on her.
So for the benefit of the audience, you're a Republican.
Yes. As, as is all but one elected official in Collin County. So.
Who is the one?
Mahala Plaza. I believe that's how you say her name. She's, she's the HD 70, the new HD 70.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Yeah. Down in. Yeah. That extends down into the southern part of the county.
So it's, it's interesting, the politics of, of the Dallas area, how Dallas is very blue and Colin is very red. And blue being Democrat, red being Republican. And there've been some interesting differences. I, I may want to talk about that. We can talk about whatever you want, by the way, on this podcast.
Okay.
I just happen to, to, I don't think most people know what a county commissioner does.
Yeah.
I barely know. And, and I know.
Yeah. And in smaller counties, uh, the county commissioners actually are out on the road graders, actually working on the roads quite a bit. And they, the budgets are allocated on a per county commissioner basis. So they end up in kind of a contentious thing where they're all always fighting for budget. We have a de facto unit system because you can run it two ways. One, each commissioner precinct, which is roughly 25% of the county, has their own budget and they're working on their roads that way. Or we can unify together and have a public works director, which we do in Collin County that handles all the roads. And then that means the county's gotten large enough to where we actually have someone that looks at the overall road conditions. And in fact, this commissioners court coming up, um, our public works director has got his, uh, recommended list of roads that he's going to work on this year. And Collin County is really unique in that we have all but just a couple percent of our roads completely paved. That's unique across, uh, the entire state that all of our county roads are essentially paved.
Nice. The roads are great around here.
Yeah. Most of the, most of the county roads in other parts of the state, they're, they're either rock or dirt.
Yeah.
You'll notice when if you start.
Yeah.
If, if you're, if you get stuck on a traffic jam on 35 and you get directed off on GPS, you'll, you'll find those rock county roads pretty quick.
So how does it work between the roads that are in the city versus roads that are like county roads? What's the difference there?
Once, once a city annexes into the county, um, they will own that road. So if they annex next to an county road, the law is such now that they have to annex the entire road adjacent to where they're annexing in.
So what does annexing mean?
So annexing is whenever the city's, um, boundary or their jurisdiction for their ordinances and laws they create inside the city, will now extend out into the, what they call the unincorporated area, which has no, no city boundary, you know, it's, it's the, it's the wild west, so to speak. It's the.
So if you want more freedom on your land, buy in the county, not, and not in anything that's annexed.
Yeah.
With the city, because you have, you have the United States federal laws, then you have the states laws. If you're in the state of Texas. Then if you're in Collin County, you have the county laws. But then if you're inside of a city, you also have the city ordinances and city laws.
Well, that's actually in.
Well, actually, no, I said that wrong. There are no, there are no county laws.
No, there's not. There's only county policy.
County policy and county taxes.
Yeah.
But no particular county laws. That's right.
Yeah. So county.
Think that a lawyer with a podcast called the lawyer Dana show would have gotten that right off the cuff.
Yeah. So the, uh, so you have, you have the, the county, we only set policy into what we're allowed to by the state legislature.
Yep.
Uh, we are a constitutionally created body. So whereas a city is actually a government corporation that's created, you know, by the people to govern their area and they can create any law as long as it's not in opposition to a state law.
Yeah.
So they can create an ordinance or kind of a city law, um, as long as it doesn't conflict. Uh, the, the county, we can't do anything unless the state says you're allowed to do this. If it says you may do this, that gives us a policy decision that we can make. If it's you must do this, then the county, that's what we do.
And you have to do it.
Yeah. Because we are a subdivision of the, of the state government.
What if the state makes a law that says you have to pay for something that you can't pay for, you don't have the revenue for? How does, how does a county deal with that?
We pay for it and yeah.
You figure it out.
We pay for it and we have to raise taxes for it. It is.
Or you cut something else.
Or we cut something else. Absolutely. And you know, after, you know, Collin County has been, you know, very conservative. And after so many years of cuts, eventually you just, it gets to a point where the state says you have to do it. It's a unbudgeted mandate, you know, where the, the state's not giving us money. Occasionally they'll, they'll give us money along with a mandate to do something, but that's becoming more and more rare that they actually do that.
How is Collin County doing?
Uh, we're doing fantastic. Uh, we're one of the few, uh, county governments that has a fully funded pension system. Which you look down in other counties, maybe south of us that they have.
Are you talking about Dallas?
Uh, perhaps, but, uh, you know, other, other entities around the state, um, have way underfunded a lot of their liabilities. And you know, our liabilities, we have met all of our responsibilities. We have a good budget surplus in our reserve.
How much?
Golly, the last, last time we looked, I think we had, um, well over like 180 days of.
Nice.
Of budgetary surplus.
So you, so Collin County is following Dave Ramsey's baby steps. I mean, you've got a six month emergency fund.
Oh yeah. Absolutely. Absolutely.
That's fantastic.
Yeah. The, uh, we, uh, we're, we're able to, now I will say inflation's killing us. I mean, inflation's. Going to be, uh, causing us a lot of pain this next year. It started to cause us some pain this year.
And what aspects, what things that the government is in Collin County is paying for are going up.
Just, just like any, just like any business.
Labor.
Labor, uh, labor costs, you know, it's, it's half, it's half of our expenses, just like, just like any business. And you've got, you know, almost 2,000 employees in the, in the county government. And whenever you have inflation running seven and eight percent. Now here's, here's the other thing that people don't take into account. We tax what I would call CPI dollars or consumer dollars, because the stuff that you and I would spend on a home basis. You know, that's, those, those dollars are inflating at that rate for you and me. But the county government, we and the cities, we deal with a municipal price index. So the municipal price index has been running 11, 12%.
How and why?
Different, different mix of products. Whenever you're talking about concrete and rebar and asphalt and things like that. It's been inflating at a much higher, higher rate and it's about to get worse. I was talking yesterday with our county administrator and he said that the, um, we, we originally did a quote for our, our new medical building. Or excuse me, uh, our new, our new check-in for the, the jail started off at 16 million. And then, uh, that was a, that was about a year and a half ago. And then the next bid came in. Came in at 20 million.
Wow.
And then the actual final bids in the final contract came in at 25 million.
Wow.
So we inflated like 40% over a two-year period.
Wow.
So the inflation on construction and I.
So we're building on to, adding on to the jail?
Yeah, we're, we're adding on to the jail, uh, with some of the ARPA funds that, uh, we're just now getting into using. That's American Rescue Plan. Um, a couple hundred million.
Wow.
And here's the thing, everyone's looking at inflation right now. Oh, inflation's bad because all the money that was spent from the CARES Act and ARPA, there's still trillions of dollars of ARPA funds that haven't been spent yet. So we have the Fed combating inflation with money that's actually still sitting in bank accounts right now that's yet to be spent. So there's still a couple trillion dollars that it's going to be funneling into the, still coming in. And the governments will spend it because they've, you know, they've allocated, said, this is how we're going to spend it. And we've already gone down the path and, you know, if we don't, if we don't spend it, um, you know, the taxpayers are still going to pay for it because it's going to come out of their federal taxes someday, somehow. And.
We, I mean.
And, and now it's, and now it's.
I don't know how the debt gets paid.
So it, it's still going to be, um, adding to inflationary pressures. And so all the cost of construction, all that, it's going to be up still for the next couple of years as this almost two trillion dollars that's left from ARPA. Makes its way out into the economy.
Wow. Interesting. Interesting. Uh, how much, how much are we adding on to the jail?
Um, so the jail, uh, ultimately is going to get a whole new, a whole new wing and, you know, section of.
With a giant long corridor again?
Yeah. Another, another long corridor, you know, branching off.
Criminal defense lawyers that had to walk that thing.
Yeah. So I, I think that one's probably the east west. So it'll be whenever you branch and you go down the side.
That's where I really got to know Jay Bender. Cause he and I were walking down that hall.
You knew him from jail?
Yeah, I do. We were both getting clients out of it.
Oh, okay.
But you have to walk to the bail window is at the end of that hall. So you have to walk that entire long hallway. And I don't know how to explain how long that hallway is, but you could shoot a movie in that hallway about how long the hallway is.
Yeah. What's, I mean, you have to have the sheriff on, but, uh, he, or the jail administrator to talk about the fact that it's an unsupervised jail. They actually have like little bracelets where they say, yeah, they say, okay, you have to go to this, this location. They'll release an inmate and they know where he is by tracking him through.
Kidding?
You know, they'll send him down the hallway. They'll send him down the hallway and they send them down that way to go on their own.
Wow.
And they have so many seconds to get there before they start going looking for them.
I mean, I guess it depends on what kind of offense offender they are or something. Uh, you know, if you've got somebody in there for something.
But they're in there. They're not getting out. I mean, it's.
Yeah, no, I get it.
You know, anyone that's even there visiting, once you go in, you're in until.
Yeah.
You know, you get escorted out.
You know, that's, that's, so that wasn't that way. It's been 12 or 13 years since I've taken a criminal defense, uh, client and done any of that work. And so that's, that's amazing that that has changed that way.
Yeah, there's, there's different types of supervision that you can have. And our method of supervision, um, allows a little bit more flexibility. So it's the jail.
They have fights in that jail?
Rarely. I mean, there's fights in every jail. I mean, look at the, the, the people that are in there for certain reasons.
Well, yeah, right.
And, uh, but you know.
Do they kind of segregate based on who, what your crime is? You know, people that are doing.
They have mandates.
Dumb stuff, but not bad stuff.
They have.
Violent.
They have mandates on categories of offenses on who can be mixed with who. So they won't put the.
That's good.
They won't put like the, you know, the heavy misdemeanor guys with the heavy felons.
Yeah.
They'll put them with the medium state jail felony offenses with them.
Yeah.
So there's certain combinations of, of, uh, alleged crimes that they'll put with certain other alleged crimes.
Yeah.
But.
Well, I think that makes more sense because you, you put a murderer or rapist or gangbanger or something in with somebody who happens to be in jail. Cause he's got an alcohol problem. He's got his third DWI, but is otherwise a very mild mannered, wimpy type of guy.
Yeah.
He's going to get killed.
Yeah. They don't, uh, yeah, they, they try to, they try to avoid the hardening up of people too.
Yeah. Okay. Good. Well, that's good news. Good. So, so how much concrete and rebar and things like that? Does Collin County buy? I mean, and for example, like there was some, some construction and things happening on 75. And I, I think I've heard you talk about the HOV lane that goes up in 75. How much do y'all have to do with the decisions that are made about that? What's the, what do y'all do? What does Texas Department of Transportation do? Tech dot?
So we, we handle, we handle all the county roads that are not inside a city. And I say that because the, the name county road is just a name. Because once, once a city annexes, it doesn't mean that it's still the county's responsibility inside the city. The city now owns it. They just haven't changed the name. So that can cause a lot of confusion. The FM's, the farm to market roads and US highways and interstate highways are all handled by the department of transportation. So tech dot handles all that. And whenever we get involved in, um, projects like say, uh, US 380.
That's a big one.
Yeah. We'll have, we'll have our initial meetings. It's next week on what their final alignments are on, uh, some of the, some of the contentious outer loop pieces. Or not outer loop.
Is that big interchange at, uh, 380 and the Dallas North tollway? Is that in Collin County or is that in Denton County?
That, that interchange, I believe is, gosh, it's not my precinct. So.
It's not Grayson, obviously. Well.
No, it's not Grayson. Um, if it's, if it's not in Denton, it might be the dividing line. So it's that, that highway makes a couple little jogs. You know, there, that tollway makes a couple of jogs where at one point it's over in Denton and then it goes back into Collin.
Yep.
You know, when that, when the tollway was created over there.
Has there been any friction between Denton County and Collin County about that particular project or just, that's all techs dot dealing with that?
Right. Tech, techs does dealing with that over in Denton County. There really hasn't been any friction. I, I know that.
Do you ever get friction with other counties about anything?
For, oh, well during COVID, we obviously had some.
Okay.
Friction with, uh, other surrounding counties, us being open and other counties not being open because they were mad that all their citizens were leaving their county to come to our county for dinner and shopping.
Did, so did that have a positive effect on the tax revenue?
It, I guess it had a less negative effect on tax revenue because.
What was the negative effect of?
Well, if you looked, if you looked at the, the business policies that, um, our county judge did through his executive orders and that we affirmed from the commissioners court, um, we stayed about 2% ahead on the unemployment numbers than Dallas County. So we had less people unemployed because Judge Hill had said, all businesses are essential. All people are essential.
That was excellent.
All those jobs are essential.
By the way, I, I was, I was a big fan of that and it was nice to have actual American freedom. I felt pressure of lockdown and we weren't particularly locked down. Uh, but that, that was a tough time. It was, it was a sad time. And I was glad that there was a, a difference because you could see a major difference between Collin County and Dallas County. And Collin County was, um, it, it felt like we still lived in America and it felt, felt peaceful and free. And people, people had a choice that I don't, most people didn't have to, have to, have to go out if they didn't want to, and people could stay home.
Well, and it was very selective too. And the, when you start having someone that is just essentially issuing edicts that said, okay, these, these businesses are going to close and these can stay open, but yet they both sell exactly the same thing.
Exactly.
Whenever you have a Walmart that sells groceries and clothes, but you're shutting down the mom and pop grocery store, or you're shutting down the mom and pop clothing store.
Yep.
That are individual.
That is not right.
It doesn't make sense because you're now picking and choosing.
Exactly.
Who wins and loses.
I don't think that's constitutional. I think that's.
Oh no. And here's the thing though, they were banking on the fact that they weren't going to get sued. You have.
Did they get sued?
Um, there are some lawsuits that are going on.
Still pending? Yeah.
Um, like EG Steakhouse up in Frisco.
Oh, really?
They actually have, they ended up suing the county incorrectly.
Dallas County or?
Collin County.
Collin County. Okay.
But, um, they, they rightfully were, are able to sue the governor for his edicts shutting certain things down.
Oh, interesting.
And it has to do with, uh, wrongful public taking. It's exactly the same laws that apply to eminent domain. You can't have a government shut down a business or take something from you without just compensation. And that, you know, they were shutting down businesses without compensating them for.
Are they out of business or are they still open?
Oh, they're still, they're still open.
Oh, okay. Cool.
But you can sue them for lost business too.
Yeah.
Because they were prohibiting them from doing business during certain time periods.
Yeah.
And it was also impacting them. You would have these silly rules. Like you go into a restaurant. If you had nine people, you could sit at a table, but if you had 10, you had to break into two tables. You know, of course, then.
It's a little arbitrary.
It's a little arbitrary. And of course then people would just slide their tables together and you get, come over and people slap you on the rest. You move them apart for a few seconds and then you move them back together again. And, um, like, like that magical distance of a foot or two is going to make a big difference between people. Um, you know, you had this.
When you see Gavin Newsom in California doing the exact same thing, but won't let everybody else, what the heck is that? You know, I mean.
You just need better attorneys though, to be able to sue on your behalf to, to win, you know, when, because of constitutional rights. I mean, there, it's both written into the Texas constitution and into the US constitution. And almost every, every state constitution adheres to the US constitution. So.
Yeah. Well, it's supposed to.
Supposed to anyway.
There's, there's a little bit of variation there that hopefully a good lawyer will file some lawsuits and, and fix that out so that that at least.
Yeah. I don't know how that, how that lawsuit ended up turning out, but I mean, they were right to, right to sue. Uh, because you can't have government come in and just oppressing you just on a whim, much less having.
It's shocking that.
A singular executive, you know, monarchy ended a couple of hundred years ago for us.
The, the, the power hungriness that we saw was insane during that period. And, and this, I'm just going to rule as if I'm the king, just because I think it's the right thing to do. Uh, no, that's not, not the right thing to do. If anything, it's like in Texas, you put the legislature in session, say, what are we going to do about this? Make a law and then I'll sign the law if I'm the governor, but you can't just rule down this, this edicts that, that were coming down.
Yeah. Well, a lot of the, uh, emergency orders are still in effect.
Oh, I, I'm aware.
Yeah. Not, not in Collin County. Uh, it's been rescinded in Collin County for months, if not over a year now.
I haven't noticed anything in Collin County. Makes me very happy to be in Collin County.
Yeah. It would always annoy, annoy me when I would go around to different businesses and, and on the door, it would say, Collin County, you know, due to Collin County ordinance or government, you know, this is, this is being done. And I'd have to walk in and tell them, hey, uh, you need to take that sign down because we never pass any such thing, nor did the judge issue any executive order.
Interesting. Yeah. Do you think some of them were using it as an excuse to?
Oh yeah. They were just making stuff up.
Do you think it was the owners or the employees or?
Owners, owners were.
Owners? Yeah. Why? Why? Like to, to close down or was it a political statement or something?
Well, they were, they were wanting to, they were wanting to, instead of, instead of a business exerting their own right to set their own rules inside their business. They would, they would say it was because of the government.
Oh, trying to pass the buck.
Certain things. Yeah. They would say, okay, mask required because of Collin County.
Oh.
Whenever.
It's really they want masks.
They want masks, which is totally okay.
Yeah.
But they weren't going to put it on themselves. They weren't going to make the decisions for themselves. They were going to put it off on the, the county as.
As people do.
As we were the ones that were doing it.
Well, that's, that's interesting because you, you've got a county that are allowing you to have the freedom to choose, which you should. I mean, I, I think if you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. I don't judge anybody for wearing a mask. Uh, but if you don't want to wear a mask, I don't think you should have to wear a mask. I, I think it's, well, I don't want to get our channel banned and talking to, about, about this too much. I don't know what the rules are, uh, on the YouTube rules that are, that is, um, you would think that I would check, but I actually have actual real lawyering to do. So there are certain things, I'll get around to that at one point. If we get a strike, we'll deal with it. But, um, so why did you want to be a county commissioner? What, what inspired you to do that?
So actually it was a lot of, so I'm a West Point graduate and it was from, I saw a lot of my classmates were starting to retire or, or they were leaving, they were going, doing, um, you know, public service of different types. Some were starting nonprofits, some were, you know, volunteering for different nonprofit organizations. And some were actually getting back into the military. This was, this was, um, you know, gosh, once again, about 10, 15 years ago that I started thinking about doing something different. And they, uh, you know, some of my classmates inspired me to, to get more involved in something. And I started getting more involved in politics and thought that that might be a route for me. And then I realized there wasn't any open positions and, uh, for me to run for office. And, you know, I, I finally came to that decision. I was just going to sell my business off. I had to open my painting company and was in the process of selling it. I was going to sell my company, start a new business, told my wife that, okay, I guess I'm not running for anything because there's no positions open that, um, where I feel, you know, really needs to change right now, where I'm going to actively run against someone. And made my decision, said a prayer, thanked God for, uh, for, you know, healthy family. I have four girls, uh, you know.
And one of your girls, I see her art is a freaking amazing.
Yeah. She, she's home right now from college. Yeah. And.
Does she have like, uh, any kind of YouTube channel? Does she have like any kind of YouTube channel or Instagram or something like some kind of website, something that?
She, she has, she has, she has an Instagram. She had, he hadn't.
What's her Instagram?
Oh gosh, I'd have to look on my phone, but I'll, I'll share it with you.
We'll put it, we'll put it in the show notes in the description below.
But yeah, you know, I, I was able to thank God for, you know, having a, uh, you know, healthy family and said my prayers, well, you know, give me guidance on what to do next, you know, uh, you know, what kind of business we need to start and you know, I'd actually, we started on the path of, uh, applying for a Chick-fil-A of all things. So.
Would have been a nice.
So we were in the process of filling out the application. Uh, we'd gotten a referral in and that night, it was probably that night after I'd said that prayer or the next day, within a day, Keith Self had decided that he was going to step down and not run again. And Judge Hill announced that he was going to run for, or for, you know, leave his commissioner position or run for.
So you have Chris Hill's old seat.
So I have Chris Hill's old seat and literally it was within a day and I said, Marine, I just went to McKinney Tea Party meeting and Chris announced that he's running for this. You know, I just told you yesterday that I wasn't going to run for anything. I said my prayers and this is what happened. I think I'm supposed to run for, for county commissioner.
It's a pretty clear little tip of the hat from God there.
Yeah. And she goes, oh, that's nice. It's like, if you think that's what you need to do, I'll support you. And the next day I, I, I went and filed paperwork to, to run for, I filed my, uh, you know, ethics commission paperwork with the county to open up all my, uh, uh, you know, candidacy paperwork. And showed it to her. She's like, oh, this is real. You're actually doing this. So, uh, so, and I, that was running for the unexpired terms. I ran that and then I, I had to run it back to backs. I, I did for the remainder, remaining half of Chris Hill's term, which was a two-year period. And then I was elected two years ago to the four-year term that I'm in now. And I'm getting ready to have to, I'm already doing campaign planning to, to run again.
Are you block walking?
Um, I will be. Yeah.
So you are the, I think the most prolific block walker that I know. Cause how, how many doors have you knocked on? I know it's more than 10,000.
It's over 10,000 now. So it's, it's.
That's a lot.
It's a lot of doors. It's up there.
So, I mean, well, that kind of makes sense for a West Point grad. Get out there and boots on the ground.
Yeah, just go do it.
So tell me about West Point. Um, what was it like to go to West Point? What was your military career? How did, how did you get into West Point?
I got mailed a postcard from West Point saying, you know, we've noticed that you're in the top 5% of your graduating class. You know, you might consider West Point as a, as a college. It was like any other college thing. I got a, I got a postcard, fill out here for more information and I sent it back. And I got to pack it back and I looked at it and liked it. And, you know, I was applying to a lot of different places and ended up that I was, I got nominations from both, both senators and from my congressman in Arkansas. I grew up in Northwest Arkansas and I ended up, I went on Senator Bumper's nomination to West Point and.
How did you get the senators nominations? How did you know them or did you just reach out to them and say, hey, I'm a great kid?
It was an application process to apply for the nominations.
Oh, wow.
And, and typically what happens is whoever the top person is in that particular congressional district will usually get the number one, will get that congressional seats nomination. And that appointee will go on that person's and then they'll, they'll look at who the number twos and threes and fours were inside all the congressional seats for the entire state and they'll put those people onto the senatorial nominations and appoint them through the senators.
How many people do they take?
So it is five. They can, they can nominate 10 people per slot available. And every fifth year, they can nominate for two people or two appointment positions. Uh, so.
How many slots are there?
So if you think about it, Arkansas had, had six electoral. So you could have up to 30 Arkansas cadets at West Point in any given time.
Per electoral college?
It, it's electoral college related and it maxes out. Now, obviously if you, and there's also appointments you can get through the president and the vice president. I didn't apply for those. And also prior service, there's some through ROTC. One of the easiest nominations to get is if you're in the army, actually get your, your commander, just to say, I appoint private snuffy to West Point. And if you meet the minimum qualifications for West Point, you're in because they never use all those nominations. So there's, there's 50 nominations that come from service connected appointments. And usually they fill 35 to 40. So they never fill all of them. Yeah. So it's.
How big is the graduating class at West Point?
It ranges between like 900 and 1200. So we're running about a thousand right now and it depends on the need in the military. And I, I graduated and, uh, went into field artillery and was blowing stuff up for a living.
Well, that sounds like.
From a long ways away.
A lot of fun.
Yeah. So I left after the, after the military.
Big guns.
Yeah. Big guns. After, after, uh, you know, shooting big guns, uh, I went into sales. So it was very analogous. Blowing stuff up from a long ways away. So.
You still use a lot of, uh, of, of killing it or blowing up type of analogy. Maybe I shouldn't say that on the podcast, right? Is that one of our banned words? We need to look up our banned words.
Yeah. But, but yeah, it, it was a, it was a great time. It was fun. Uh, it was fun, you know, delivering lots of explosive ordinance downrange.
Well, you, you know what I found very interesting and I guess we'll talk about this is we, Daryl and I went to a local gun range and we actually shot an M1 Garand, which is a, is that, that's a World War one or two?
Two.
That's two, I thought. Yeah. Man, that was a fun gun to shoot.
Yeah.
That was a really fun gun to shoot. That's a gun that actually has a clip. Because they're, they clip in and you put the clip in. It's not a magazine, which most people, when they refer to a clip, they're actually talking about a magazine.
Yeah. And my daughter outshot all of us, I think.
Nice.
And your, and your.
My wife did alright.
Your wife.
That was a, that was a lot of fun. We should go and do that again. So do you know that I've started competitively skeet shooting?
Okay.
I'm, I'm going to compete for the world championship in September for American skeet. And then in 2028, I plan on competing for one of two American spots on the US Olympic team for the Olympics in 2028.
Awesome.
And I'm going to, I, I, I start that endeavor and mission after this current world championship.
Yeah. You should, uh, you should get together with the, uh, the local Allen, uh, skeet team too.
Is there, is there a skeet team now?
They actually, yeah, the Allen, Allen actually has a competitive youth league that you can sponsor and.
Would I not be the old guy at the club?
Oh yeah, you would. You would.
Where do they shoot? Where do they, where do they, where do they practice?
They actually have their own little range that's up just, just outside, I think White Right.
Oh, okay.
So they go up there, they have their own, you know, they, uh, shoot their, shoot their clays up there.
Nice.
And, uh, I just, I just say that because they, they've had national champions and had kids go on to the Olympics out of their, out of their organization too.
The, the previous past two Olympics were, the gold medal in skeet was won by Vincent Hancock. And he lives in Fort Worth and is, and trains out there. I'm going to, I plan to go train with him, um, starting. I may, I may start sooner than I think. Cause I have a friend of mine who's on the Australian national Olympic team that came in like two weeks ago and we went out to field six at the Dallas Gun Club, which is the Olympic field.
Yeah.
And I, I was addicted from the first moment of that. The targets go 30 or 40% faster. And you have to start from a down mount, a low mount position. In American skeet, you start mounted and you basically call pole and then it pulls immediately and you, you trace it out. For Olympic skeet, you call pole and they can delay it up to three seconds. And when you see the target leave the house, you have to then mount the gun and shoot it and it's going 30 or 40% faster. And it is a lot of fun to do that. And there's one on, 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 there's seven stations, eight, eight stations. And station eight, so if you can imagine a circle, have you ever, have you ever shot skeet like on, on a skeet field?
Only on video games.
So, right. So duck hunt.
Yeah, duck hunt.
So imagine a circle with, with like a line through from about two o'clock to 10 o'clock. Take that part away. And then there's a high house and a low house. Well, most of the time you're, you're, you're shooting from around the, the circle of each of those, but on station eight, you go in, right in between the high house and the low house. So you're half the way closer and this thing is coming out this way above you from above. And at the speed that it's coming, it's, it almost instantaneously like just blows by you and you have to get up and mount. And so I was doing it and each time I, I started increasing the leads. You have to, because of the, the distance, you have to shoot ahead of it in order to hit it. And I started going like six feet lead, eight feet lead. And every time he goes, you're behind it. It's like, oh, so. And with that challenge, I, I, I became addicted again. I was addicted from the first shot just because it was faster. And I hit it. Can I go, if, if I hit this first shot, that's going to be my thing. If I don't, maybe I'm not going to do this. I hit the first shot and I hit a bunch of them. And I was much better at it than I thought I was im- immediately. And then we get to eight and I can't do it. And I'm like, oh, now I'm obsessed. I will not let this thing beat me. I will master this.
Yeah.
And now I'm addicted. So, um, so you told your, you tell your wife you're really doing this. What all did you have to put into it in order to, to run?
So, uh, first go around, anytime you're a newcomer, unless you really know a lot of people already. You know, you're going to have to put a lot of your own money into it. And you know, you'll, you'll fundraise more and you get a little better at it and you meet more people and you fundraise. So it's a lot of time and dollars that go into it at the beginning. And, you know, I had sold my business. I'd, I'd made a decent profit on selling my business. So I put some money from that into, you know, supporting us and to, um, also, you know, fund the campaign initially.
What, what did it cost you?
It was, it was about $80,000 the first go around. To run, you know, and it's gotten less expensive each time because I have a lot of the, a lot of the assets. A lot of the same signs, a lot of the same assets.
I know I've got some in my garage over there. I may have some actual of your signs in this room somewhere.
Yeah. And, uh, you know, so it, you know, it helps that, you know, just name recognition, plus you, you just get better at it and you know, you know, what to look for.
You build on all the work that you've done.
You've been on all the work. Um, a lot of, a lot of knocking on doors, meeting people, a lot of club visits. You know, just getting your name out there, um, you know, being visible. And, you know, now that I'm commissioner, can be, you know, I'm doing the work. So I'm out there being seen doing the work.
Yeah. Hey, you are very active in doing the work.
Yeah.
And I, I haven't heard anybody complain that you're not working.
Yeah.
Cause you really do work and you keep the, your constituents very well informed about what's going on.
Yeah. Um, I try, I try every time we have a commissioners court meeting to, to put out a notice about just the highlights of what's going on in the meeting and uh, if there's anything important. Usually, uh, commissioners court is a pretty quick and routine affair. Occasionally there's new things that come in, um, you know, on a, on a per meeting basis. I don't think there's going to be anything, you know, too terribly contentious, um, this coming meeting. Although one that might be of interest to you is, uh, uh, we'll be talking about uh, different, different courthouse related things at this coming meeting, this coming Monday. So.
So does Emily Miskel getting appointed to the appellate bench and have that vacancy? Do y'all have anything? Does, does that affect?
We have no effect on that whatsoever because.
Cause the governor appoints.
Yeah. Because it's, if it, if it had been.
And new judges just steps in and they probably don't need any different money or anything.
Yeah. It's a, a district court is actually a state court. So, um, the governor appoints that state district court. We will, we have to provide the, the location for them to perform the work. So we're providing the facilities. You know, that'll be one of the things that we talk about is, you know, future needs for, we'll put requests in through legislature of what we think the new need for district courts is going to be. And they'll pass legislation to create new courts.
What do you think it is? Do y'all have a, a, a gauge on that at the moment?
I would have to look at, I did a, uh, statistical regression analysis on our population, the court cases and everything that goes into what the needs are on a per court basis, based on what we've had historically. I think we're going to end up needing a couple of new courts. And it's going to get to the point to where our population growth is going to be creating the demand on a yearly basis for a new court.
Wow.
I know. It's just going to be that many and it, and it's based on population. The regression analysis I did said that 86% of the variability and the demand on, on how many courts we need is made up by population. The other 14% is the court case types. And if there's really not that much variability in the court case types, they're inconsequential to the overall demand on how many courts we need.
Well, so in Texas, there's district courts and then there's county courts at law. Do y'all have a, a different effect on the county courts at law or is it just the same thing, same process as the district court?
Since, uh, since the source of the dollars on who pays for the different courts is different. The, the bulk of the money for the district court, uh, comes from the state and then we pay supplements. But everything else, you know, comes through the county. You know, we'll, we'll put a request of, hey, we need this many courts and it's just done.
So the retirement program for the district courts versus the county court, like for the judges or the staff for the courts is, is one of them state and then one of them county? Or how does that work?
Yeah. One state, one's county. Uh, the, the county, we use, uh, a retirement system, uh, TCD RS. Texi, Texas county and district retirement system. So it, you know, we contribute 7% out of our own paychecks into it. And it gets matched two to one from the county and then it vests over an eight-year period. And once, once you're vested, you know, there's then a particular, uh, amount of years. I have to double check. It's either 70 or 75 of your age, plus how many years of service. And once that's done, you can then turn around and retire and start uh, getting a new, an annuitized amount for you or your spouse or both, or however it works out, uh, that you select. The state retirement system, uh, for the district court judges is completely different. I wouldn't even really be able to speak to it very well.
Okay.
The, the county part know fairly well, the.
So let me ask you this question. If, do you get a monthly statement showing how much is in the account?
Yes.
Okay. Does that statement show how much you've contributed or does it show how much you've contributed plus that two to one match?
Uh, the two to one match isn't shown. It does show the, the interest accrued, which it also is guaranteed a 7% interest rate. With inflation being so high, in a way, it's actually going to help somewhat because when you start inflating the dollars, as long as the market continues to do reasonably well, at least through what investments the, the state does through the TCD RS. Then we'll be okay. As we were running really low interest over the past 20 years. And finally they came back to us. They made us, um, a previous year, actually we had to put an extra like $20 million into the retirement system from reserves because they changed the way the calculations were done. We were completely paid up and they said, no, we're changing the way we calculate your, your liabilities in the future. You now need to put 20 million more in it.
Does what's happening in the market negatively affect the retirement or?
It, it can if the, the hedge fund that's behind TCD RS doesn't invest properly. But if they're investing correctly, they're still going to get good returns. And the TCRS, the, the fund managers actually have been fantastic. They do better than the municipal uh, retirement system or the teacher's retirement system, either one of those.
Nice.
The county retirement system has been running, you know, a point, point and a half percent ahead of everybody else. You know, for the past 20 years.
Wow. That's impressive.
Yeah. So it, it really adds up over time to have that, have that, you know, better return. The, uh, so from that standpoint, retirement's great. Um, you know, the, we've had been having a hard time hiring people into the county. We had a lot of. We had a lot of, we still have a lot of open positions.
What are the open positions?
Gosh, it's all across the board, all the way from detention officers to different clerk positions, uh, road crews. We've had perpetually almost a full road crew or road crew and a half that we've needed people for, um, you know, equipment operators, drivers, truck drivers, people with commercial driver's license. You know, there's, uh, I think a lot of people haven't, haven't come in the past because people were paying so much additional for all the labor. You know, the labor rates don't look on paper to be very attractive, but when you consider the fact that the, you have great retirement and you also have uh, great benefits. So the, the healthcare benefits, because we design our own healthcare. The county actually lays out our own healthcare plan and then has United Healthcare administer it for us. So.
Well, I'm glad that you got to explain about the retirement program because there's a very common problem that I see when people are analyzing jobs is that they look at just the one number, oh, what is my take home? And they don't look at what the retirement is because so many people just ignore retirement and don't plan for that. And I think it's a fault of our high school system and education system, college system, that they're not teaching people how to manage their own money and how to take care of themselves financially. It's a big, big problem. And the proper way to analyze, if you're looking at a job is you need to put a dollar amount on the value of the benefits package. You need to put a dollar amount on the value of the retirement. And you add all that up and go, here is what I'm really making. Here's the full value of what, what I'm really making.
Yeah, absolutely. One of our admins, she actually was looking at a different job. And she analyzed it. They offered her the job. We knew she was looking and, they offered her more money, but she said, I can't take it because, you know, the healthcare is worth at least $10,000 a year to me. And she goes, you're only offering me like a $6,000 increase. So I'm, I'll be losing money to take this job, even though on paper it pays more.
Right.
And so she turned them down. She thanked them and she was like, yeah, you know, I'm where I need to be. And, uh, the, you know, right now you look at what Obamacare has done to the, the medical insurance industry. And when you start looking at the deductibles, you know, through the county, you can get a, you know, 250, $500 deductible, you know, maximum out of pocket, you know, a thousand or $2,500 worth. It's individual or family. And you just don't get that anywhere else right now. It, it doesn't happen. And, uh, you know, for us to only be paying, you know, a few hundred bucks out of pocket every month for the insurance as well.
That's great.
Yeah. It's fantastic. And, you know, we do some things that are smart. We actually have a clinic where people have to go and get checked out every year to get the best rate. And we catch things that would have been detrimental, both financially, but also to the people. Whenever we're having them go through yearly evaluations for physicals in order to get the best rates. You know, they start managing their own health a little bit better. And, you know, that, there's been numerous times cancers have been found.
Wow.
And they're catching it at stage one or stage one and a half, you know, between stage one and two.
Yeah.
And they get completely cleared from it. Whereas if they had maybe missed or waited a year or two, it impacts their health greatly. And, um, you know, it, it's worth it. It's worth it to the county to have better healthcare. If it keeps our workforce healthier and safer. And it's.
It's a win-win.
And it's win-win. And it's better on the pocketbook too, because, you know, we would take care of them, you know, when they're diagnosed. But, you know, going through a cancer treatment.
Well, prevention is always less expensive than a cure.
So much less expensive.
Yeah. And then your treatment, you know?
So. That's planning ahead. We, we actually pay people, we, we give them a bonus to go get treated. So they get not only a cash bonus, but they then turn around and get lower rates if they've gone and done the things that we asked them to do.
Well, if you're saving the money, that absolutely makes sense.
Yeah. Saving the money.
And more important, you're saving the people.
Yeah. Much rather give a bonus out to someone to be doing something that they should be doing anyway.
Instead of paying for healthcare.
Yeah.
On the other side.
Exactly. Versus paying for being in a hospital bed.
That, that is really, yeah, absolutely. That is really, really good. Um, I'm, I'm gonna take that lesson even into our companies. That's really, that's a great idea. So one of the reasons why I asked you about your statement and, and what it shows on the statement. So this is going to be a little bit of legal education for informational purposes only. This is not legal advice. You should always talk to a lawyer on your own and get an actual consultation about your exact circumstance.
Don't trust YouTube lawyers just purely on what they say.
Don't trust YouTube lawyers. If you want to, if you want my actual legal opinion, call my office at 214-789-4735, schedule a consultation. We'll be happy to help you. But when, in, in the context of a divorce, a retirement asset is usually a very substantial asset if you have one. And it is subject to division. Well, a lot of times people will look at a retirement account and go, all right, you've got $30,000 in your account. I've got $30,000 here. Uh, you just keep, keep your retirement account and I'll, I'll keep the $30,000 here. Well, if you, if you're not wise enough, and this is why people shouldn't do their own divorces, even if they think it, oh, it's just easy. Is this may be a three to one payout. This $30,000 on that statement may actually be a $90,000 valued retirement account. And it also may be tax preferred. As opposed to this retirement account over here, you may have to pay 40% tax on. These are the type of things that you have to take a look at when you're, when you're dividing.
Yeah. There's actually, there's actually a little calculator they put in there that on the, on the TC DRS, it gives you a estimate of your guaranteed annuity, you know, once you hit retirement. You know, based on, you know, average increase every year and pay.
Tell you the present value of that annuity or do you need to just take that and then drop it into an annuity calculator?
It has, it gives you a future present value of the monthly.
Perfect. Yep.
Of the monthly annuity. So it actually calculates what the future expected monthly annuity would be when you retire a certain year from now. So it does all the calculations for you.
That's excellent. Cause that's the more important information that we try to look at whenever we're dividing accounts like that.
Yeah. There has been some odd situations where people will turn around and retire, go off and do another job for a year and decide that they wish that they were back at the county and they'll come back to work at the county. And they have to start a second TC DRS.
Really?
And they'll end up having a second annuity. Cause what happens when you retire, TC DRS takes that money, buys an annuity on the market and says, this is your, this is your payment that you're getting every year.
Interesting. Okay.
And, you know, they'll either set it up to be just for you or they'll fix it. It'll be a lower amount if you also put your wife onto it, that if you passed away.
Yeah.
Oh, that's the other thing too. Um, anyway, I'm, I'm still finding out things about the retirement system. I got an email, said, congratulations. You've now hit four years. Now, if something were to happen to you, your wife can actually claim your annuity at four year mark.
Oh, nice.
So.
Survivor benefit basically.
There's survivor benefits that are built into it as well.
So the annuity goes until you pass away and then it stops. Is that right or no?
Unless you elect differently because there's, there's different things where they call, you know, a bump up where, you know, if, if you were to pass away, you know, you have certain bump ups for your spouse, or it could be 50% to your spouse or um, a hundred percent to your spouse. You know, obviously if it's fully covering you and your spouse until both of you are passed away, then it's going to be the least, least amount. So there's different options that you can pick whenever you decide to retire.
Is there anything inheritable or, or devisable? Meaning you can put it in your will and then your kids get to take it until a certain point?
Yeah, absolutely. If both of you pass away.
So let's say you retire and you both pass, you have, supposed to have a bunch of money in there and you both pass away a year later.
Yeah. So, and there is a cash value to it that in that respect, it works just like a regular annuity. If there's only been so many payments out of the cash value, then you get the remainder of the cash value passed on, uh, to your descendants.
That's a really, really good retirement program.
Yeah.
That is very, very good. I mean, and the thing about it is, is that if, if you don't have a retirement account, you need to create one on your own and you should put in at least 10% of what you make. And you should pay yourself first, meaning for every thousand dollars that you make, you take a hundred dollars, you put it in that account and you consider it spent. You never ever touch it.
Yeah. So my, my daughter's, my daughter's 19 and, uh, she just got her scholarship from ROTC. So she's now paying her way completely through school. She's getting a $210 stipend every month. And she's taking $50 or I'm sorry, every two weeks. She's actually taking $50 every two weeks, putting it into a brokerage account. And I'm teaching her how to invest in stocks.
Excellent.
So she gets an understanding of dividends.
Could you just, when you do that, do that with your iPhone, record it and then we can put it out for other kids? Because, I mean, there's just this massive problem of kids not knowing how to do that stuff. And I commend you as a parent for doing that.
What's great about that is she sees all the bad news going on in the market about how the market's down, the market's been going down.
That you can buy stuff at a discount.
Um, the stuff that she's actually been purchasing, you know, with, with her fatherly advice is up 5% over the past three months. You know, we just started doing it.
You want to hear about my gambling investment? It's not real gambling. Well, it is gambling.
It's investing in a gambling.
So when Elon Musk announced that he was going to buy Twitter at $54.20, whatever it was. And I looked at Twitter price and it was 40 something or, you know, it jumped a lot. And I didn't catch it on the, the main jump. But it was still down, you know, somewhere in the mid 40s. And I, I bought quite a bit. Cause I go, well, it's, isn't that a guaranteed return? No, it wasn't. And it was a real roller coaster and it went down at one point and oh, it's not gonna, it, he's not going to buy it and he's going to try and negotiate the price, all that.
Bet you were happy when it finally closed, weren't you?
I was. And it was one of the best investments that I made in the year. Cause we had, you know.
What's been your, what's been your best investment ever?
My best investment ever?
Yeah.
Dana Palmer. The best investment that I ever, that I've ever made is all of the work that I've done to make myself the best person that I can be. Financially, I would say the best investment that I've made is not particularly any investment in particular. It's more the investment strategy of always investing, using dollar cost averaging and never touch it for any reason. Ever. My, I, I got a pretty good deal on the, the, my house and land and this studio here. That was, that was a good deal. I don't know. I don't know that I track or have a memory of what was the absolute, cause I've had, we've.
Yeah. Only reason I outside is like the last.
COVID hit, we bought a bunch. We were very, we had, we had, happened to be in a heavy cash position at the time. And when everything dropped, I bought a bunch of stuff.
I was, I was.
And we doubled our money.
I know. I was in the exact same situation. I had, right before the election, two years ago, I had, I had decided I was going to completely rework my portfolio. I cashed out to everything. I was a hundred percent cash when COVID hit.
Wow.
I was a hundred percent cash when COVID hit. And I still hadn't invested anything because we're all responding to COVID at the, at the county level. And the day that I got a couple of death threats or it was not necessarily death threats. They were wishing death on me. I guess is a better way of putting it.
Oh, for the COVID stuff.
Yeah. Just for COVID related things. You're killing people. Therefore I wish you dead and all your family dead. Uh, it was sort of along those lines. I said, okay, this is a great time to invest. It's mass hysteria right now. The stock market. I, uh, they say you, you shouldn't time them. You can't time the market.
We, we.
I invested one day off of the market low.
Oh, well, that was the same day we invested.
Yeah. And, uh.
We were one day off the market.
It was, it was like March 21st or something like that. And a drunken monkey could have made money in that environment, you know, if they had invested right then.
I, so speaking of restaurants, at the time, the original Three Forks, which is now no longer, they've moved to, they, they basically took over where one of their sister restaurants was and rebranded to Silver Fox and Frisco as Three Forks. Great restaurant. Go to Three Forks. And I got a call and they needed to sell off wine in order to make payroll. So I went in and bought $10,000 worth of wine at cost.
A really great investment.
Yeah, it was because I was buying the wine at what their invoice price was.
As long as you don't drink their, drink your profits though.
Well, funny enough, I only ever drink water now and I don't drink anymore. But I got, I, I got some. It wasn't even about the money. Actually, it was about when I walked into that restaurant and saw what was going on, my heart, like I could feel my heart pounding in my stomach of compassion. And I felt.
Yeah. It was just fear. It probably was empty, right?
Well, it was just the employees and they were packing it up to close down for two weeks. And didn't know if they were going to survive. And then you start extrapolating that out. Summer said, when I got home from that day, I was visibly upset. And I, I didn't realize it as much, but I was. And she had to sit down and talk with me and we had some talks about how, how are we going to do this? How are we going to try and be compassionate and help people? What do we do with our business? And some of what we were doing was, okay, maybe we pause and wait. I mean, the courts were all shutting down. And so it, there was kind of a two week period where it, nobody knew what to do during that time. It was, and it was very emotional. And we knew we were going to be okay. Why? We followed Dave Ramsey's principles. We, we, we had no debt. We had a sick, well more than six months worth of, of operating and, and emergency type of funds. And a whole bunch of other cash that we were sitting on waiting to, to invest. And we, we were, we were heavy in cash, uh, outside of retirement. And we were very heavy in cash in money that's in the retirement accounts. We're sort of heavy in cash in our retirement accounts at the moment. And, uh, I've, it's kind of on my agenda to take a look at what's down. And this is probably a good time of the year and buy some stuff that's, that's on discount. And for real estate, I think that the time to buy real estate and invest in real estate is about to, to, to be coming up. And you don't want to buy any leveraged real estate, in my opinion. I think you want to buy, if you have cash to buy real estate, you are king. Because you can buy. Well, I ran this analysis that, cause, and this is a very important thing that I'm about to do a, a CLE on, but I'll give a preview of it here. There was a couple who wanted to sell their $400,000 house and buy a $300,000 house. And they had a hundred thousand dollars worth of equity. Why? Because to pay off the $300,000 house was, was going to be cheaper. But they had a two and a half percent interest rate or 3% interest rate versus, I ran the analysis at 8%. Now interest rates are 10. The difference between them getting the $300,000 house, basically they financed $200,000 out of the $300,000 house versus the current financing of 300,000 at two, 2%. They were going to do $200,000 at 8%. The difference payoff of the $400,000 house was $500,000. The payoff for the $300,000 house that they only had to borrow 200,000 was a million dollars. It was going to cost them a half a million dollars to do the deal to get into the cheaper house. So if you're ultimately paying and, and their payment was going to be higher.
Interest, the interest rate changes are just amazing at what, what's going on.
They're building banks in downtown. They're building skyscrapers in downtown from the money that they're taking from people that are financing houses at that interest rate.
Yeah. The, uh, the, we, we actually purchased land in July. We purchased it. We, we made our offer like a week after the first large increase they made on the interest rate. And it panicked everybody and this, they, who we bought the land from had put it on the market. I don't think they actually got that many offers for the land. So we got a decent purchase. You know, anything west of US 75 that you can get for under a hundred thousand dollars an acre is, is good.
Yep.
And, uh, you know, we were able to get ag exempt property for, you know, a little less than $80,000 an acre.
That's excellent.
So we're happy. We're going to eventually.
I want to go somewhere where I can get acreage for like $800 an acre.
Go to Arkansas.
Really? Is it, is it that?
Yeah. You can get it for probably anywhere for a, you know, it's thousand to $2,000 an acre.
I actually, I'm actually seriously considering moving to Puerto Rico.
Puerto Rico? Okay.
Do you know why?
Still American. Still American citizen.
Still America, still American citizen. No federal income tax.
Yeah.
That's a lot of money for us.
Don't get to vote though.
You don't get to vote for president in Puerto Rico?
Yeah, you don't. There's no electoral college for Puerto Rico.
That is interesting. I did not know that.
Think about it. There's no electoral college, so you don't get to vote.
I guess right. I guess that's right. Do they not vote anywhere?
There's no senators. There's no representatives. Their territory.
That's true.
Might get the vote for your local mayor and
Oh, yeah.
And governor and, and I'm not sure if they get to elect their governor or if it's unappointed.
So you have, in order to do that, you have to be there, you have to live there for six, six months. I wonder if you could maintain Texas citizenship. And if you're.
Depends where your primary residence is.
I guess so. It would have to be a primary residence.
Yeah. And if you live there six months, if you live there six months, if you live there six months, it's now your primary residence.
You know, the original Boston Tea Party? You know what that tax rate was that they were protesting?
Half a cent or something like that. It's ridiculous.
Around 1%.
Yeah.
No, I don't think it was more than two.
Yeah.
And now we're tolerating 30, 40% tax rates. And there's politicians out there that think it should be 90%. If your tax rate's 90%, and then you have to pay sales tax and all the other taxes, you, you have no money.
Well, think, think about it.
You're a slave at that point.
Well, think about it. You're already the most underpaid federal worker. Yeah, you're, you're the most underpaid federal worker because think of what.
The government owns 40% of my business.
You are paid negatively by the federal government. You pay money in and you get not as much out. So.
Why do we tolerate that? And that, and the spending is insane, out of control. So, and here's, here's another thing. So I heard a lot of people in this country who were against the $5 billion for a border control wall on our southern border. Where massive amounts of drugs that are coming in and killing Americans all by the hundreds of thousands, tens of thousands at least. And the cartels are in control of our border. It's horrible. And it was going to be $5 billion to build that wall. Yet we just sent another nine times that amount of money to the Ukraine to defend their border. I, I don't get it. It, I don't, I don't understand. Well, maybe I, maybe I do understand it. And that's the problem. I, I strongly don't agree with it.
I mean, that's purely political. In a way then the Ukraine.
Why don't we take up a charitable donation and have Americans send the money that they want to send to Ukraine?
I don't know. Well, they're doing that too. The Rudder, Rudder is sent, uh, over 70 ambulances to Ukraine.
If it's a private company, it's their money. They're responsible for it, a private person and, and they're donating it to it voluntarily. That's one thing. But to take out loans, because the United States is borrowing this money, to borrow money to, to do this.
And from, from a military standpoint though, if you look at what it would take the United States to counter that with our own military, it's actually on paper, a good investment to support Ukraine in that respect. However, the federal government.
Doesn't it function as we are at war with Russia then?
Yeah, but we're doing it more efficiently by using Ukraine. It would, it would cost us probably twice as much or three times as much to do it ourselves versus having the Ukraine do it for us. Now, if it would have cost us not anything had Biden actually had a spine towards Russia and actually kept them from going in in the first place. They made it out to where it would be acceptable to have a limited war in the Ukraine and Russia, Russia just rolled on in. Whereas when Trump was in office, they did the same military exercises, didn't do anything. Never rolled in. Well, you had, but then you turn around and you have like Arizona this week. Arizona had set up a border wall using containers, uh, sea land containers.
Really?
They set up a wall that filled in all the gaps in the border wall along Arizona. And Biden came in and they disassembled it this week. So they spent federal money to disassemble part of the wall.
The border.
To open the border, uh, and make more holes in it.
And that's political corruption to me.
And the ranchers are there like, what the heck? It was fine. They, they claimed it was environmentally damaging.
Of course, they use the environment. They always use the environment to take, for political reasons, to take political power for themselves.
Yeah.
It's always the environment.
It was, uh, yeah. So they spent money to disassemble something that it wasn't a real wall, but it was a barrier that was directing migrants into an area that the border control was more able to, even though they're still letting them cross, at least they were allowed, had a way to funnel them into an area that was safer for the migrants. And, you know, the, it's just crazy. And I, I heard on my way over here to talk to you this morning, you know, Biden's has, has a new plan. They have some, they're, they're putting it onto a phone now where there's going to be an app that you can, uh, do, uh, you know, an Apple and Android app for asylum requests. So, so there, there's an app for that now.
I don't even, these are, these are not particularly my causes or the purpose of the podcast, but it just, I, I'm, I'm fighting so many other battles. I don't know that I can fight this national battle. I have the energy for it.
Oh, yeah.
It's just.
So it, you know, we, we, we get it brought up from time to time that, you know, that we, you know, the commissioner's court, we're, we're county government and we're only allowed to do what we're allowed to do from the state. But even we put out a, a call for Abbott to do whatever it takes because it does indirectly affect.
Costing a lot of money.
Well, it affects, you know, we have fentanyl deaths that are happening in Collin County, you know, it's, and that starts at the border. You know?
Well, on that happy note, Jennifer Hardy-Hart is here. So let's do this. Let's, we're going to take a break with this episode. Please like, subscribe, give us some comments. Tell us, do you like us talking about some of the politics and things that we have? Do you like, do you like, uh, Daryl Hale? Yes, as a guest. Do you hate him? Love him or hate him? We're here and, uh, please like, subscribe, give us some comments, give us some feedback. Apparently I, I've realized actually we have had an issue with, I have not seen any of the comments that have come in with our YouTube channel. We're, we're troubleshooting that over our next production meeting next week. So we will be replying to your comments and we've got a lot of great changes and improvements, a lot of great guests coming up on the 2023 version of the Lawyer Dana Podcast. So thank you for watching and we will see you in the next episode.